Six o'clock and we are opening the executives. I guess the work session for the April meeting of the Carlton City Council and we will be going into executive session. So. Alrighty, so the city council will now meet in executive session pursuant to O R S one nine two dot point six six zero two I to review and evaluate the employment related performance of the chief executive officer. Representatives of the news media and designated staff shall be allowed to attend this executive session. All other persons are asked to leave the room at this time. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on any matter addressed during the executive session, except to state the general subject of the executive session as previously announced. No final action or decision may be made while we are in executive session. The executive session is finalized and we are closing the executive session and moving into open session. At six fifty seven P M. Thank you, guys. Moving into a break until seven o'clock. Well. Yeah, the meeting actually starts at seven, so if anybody needs to take a break or rest or stretch or anything. It is a sorry. Perfect timing. It is seven o'clock and we are opening the Tuesday, April second, twenty twenty four regular session for the city of Carlton. Uh, could you call the role, please?
Council President Kevin
Here.
Councilor Councilor Jeremy Brandell.
Yeah.
Councilor Erickson.
Here.
Councilor Carolyn Thompson Reiser.
Here.
Councilor David Samuel Hill.
Here.
Marilynna Watkins.
Here.
All councils are present.
Okay, uh, which join with me in saying the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance
of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right. Are there any changes or additions to the agenda?
Yes, Mayor, there are two. We have a brief update from Hampton Lumber that we'd like to put after five A. We just move planning commissioner Juliet's house down to B and C. And it is a five minute update on the pollinator project. And then I would like to add an update on the force main break. It was number eight I.
Okay, force me. Alrighty. So having said that, we are at Samoney's appointments and announcements.
You there? I believe Lindsay is here from Hampton Lumber.
Oh.
Lindsay Davis.
Did she make it?
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes. Hi, welcome.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you so much.
There's just a slight delay on my part, so I I can having a hard time hearing is is it my turn to present?
Well, I'm gonna hand off to Shannon and let you two work it out.
Great.
We got an exciting update from Lindsay just last week, I think it was. And we invited her to come to council today to give a five minute rundown on this exciting update and what we have in the works. Lindsay, could you take it away?
You bet. Thank you so much. I appreciate you guys giving me the time tonight to speak. Uh, for those that are unaware, Hampton is a fourth generation family owned company. Uh, we own and responsibly manage forest land in both Oregon and Washington. We sell and and produce dimensional lumber. A lot of people know that. But being a family business, uh, some of the family members are maybe into forestry while others are are into making wine. So many may or may not know that Hampton owns and operates Carlton Wine Maker Studio as well as we own two vineyards. We own Finnwood Vineyard there in your backyard as well as Tall Tree Vineyard in Monmouth. So we strive to be good stewards of our land. Uh, one of the stewardship projects that we started was our pollinator project. It began in twenty sixteen on our timberlands in Oregon on our north coast. Continues today. We've now expanded it to all of our Oregon properties, our Washington properties. Uh, what we do is after the forest unit has been harvested and the site prepped and the baby trees have been planted. Uh, we come into the unit and we plant native wildflower seeds to create pollinator food and habitat. Uh, this has been a very successful program. Uh, we work very closely with Oregon State University and the Oregon Bee Project on this. Where, like I said, we've expanded it to Oregon and Washington, but we're also exploring and working with Oregon State on expanding these efforts to our two vineyards as well. Pollinators play a very key role in our landscapes and our ecosystems. We want to do everything we can to create that habitat on the lands that we own and leverage those areas where we harvest grapes or lumber. So last year, uh, last summer, really, I met with uh, the mayor and city manager to discuss an outreach and education project with Pollinator Project, which would be like a partnership with the city of Carlton in Hampton. Uh, we looked at several possible locations throughout the city where a project could thrive and the community could be involved. Uh, there were two locations, uh, fortunately adjacent from one another. That would be perfect for this project. One location is the walking path behind the apartments and correct me if I'm wrong. Shannon, I believe it's called the East Madison Street Row. And then there's an adjacent bacon lot. Uh, the idea I proposed was to see the walking path with native wildflowers for pollinator food and forage. Um, a place where local elementary schools could come and learn about pollinators and maybe even help create like bee hotels along the path. And then on the adjacent vacant lot, uh, envisioned several raised beds where we could plant a fruit, vegetable and herb community garden. That would be both pollinator friendly and available to the community. Uh, with your blessing, I'd like to continue to reach out and identify partners in the community such as agriculture, youth groups, maybe the OSU Master Gardeners, another community garden like minded folks and see if we can get this idea off the ground. Uh, the project would be funded by Hampton Lumber and shared with the community year over year. I've got uh, seed in hand, uh, ready to roll. Uh, was able to to get that when I purchased all of the seed for our timberlands. Um, and so I have seed that would be specific for the city of Carlton. And we envision creating even seed packets um, to help with outreach and education of this project with not only the residents there, but with any visitors you may have coming to your area as well. Um, really, the goal is just to create kind of a B city where pollinators, bees, butterflies, birds, all pollinators would be celebrated and embraced there and have it be a partnership with the city.
Council, this is where you gave your support last year for staff to meet with them and explore where this might go. Um, and luckily we've been waiting and Lindsay's been successful. Uh, we wanted to try these two projects as pilots. Uh, this would, if this is successful, we can continue this. This would reduce also the polling requirements for public work staff. They would be doing wildflowers and pollinators, this grass that we maintain. We would do an educational outreach that helps us do a good word out there about the purpose of it um, and safety and resolve any concerns that we have. Uh, as she said, Hampton is fundingless and is asking for no staff resources in order to make this happen. So with your blessing, we'd like to move forward with taking them up on their opportunity and their generosity.
Let's take a motion.
I think general consensus would be supportive at this point, moving forward. So I don't need a motion, just general approval.
Thank you, sir.
Not seeing any thumbs down. All right.
I just want to thank you so much, Lindsay, for reaching out and for this project. Uh, I'm really excited. Yeah, it is. It's something that I've wanted to see happen along for a long time and tried to figure out how to make it happen, so. It is a dream come, kind of a dream come true for, I think, a number of us, the city.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Looking forward to it as well.
With that being said, Lindsay, um, I'm Councilwoman Barrettson. And I've got a customer in town who is with the master garden program. And she's already told him that she's open to volunteer. Uh, she's actually asked how these properties in town, if the city was going to do anything with them. And I told her that yes, there is a program queue that was in the works. She's volunteered third time already to help out.
And I also have neighbors with little kids that want to be involved anyway they can. So I think interest will build.
Yeah.
That's really exciting. Uh, fortunately, before I came to work for Hampton, I worked for Oregon State University Extension for eleven years alongside all those master gardeners. So I really planned on to tapping into their expertise and their time to come help, help me with this project and get it off the ground. So I'm really excited to hear you've got some local master gardeners there that would like to, well, like that, get their, get their, get their hands dirty with me.
Thank you, Lindsay.
Thank you.
Thank you. You guys have a great evening.
You too. Thanks so much. Okay, that's exciting. Moving along, planning commissioner, we have a vacancy fulfillment.
I believe Mr. Chavez is on the line. If you have any questions regarding like to speak to him. Yes.
Mr. Chavez, good to see you.
Good to see you too. I'm excited.
Thank you so much.
I, uh, I'm planning to retire in September and, uh, I really wanna join the community. And, uh, we're in love with Carlton. We moved here in, uh, two thousand twenty one, June. We love the town and, uh, I want to be active part of the community. Uh, I have a, uh, degree in civil engineering. Uh, finished college back in nineteen eighty. I've been working on heavy construction, mainly power plants, paper mills, refineries. I do a lot of contract reading, specifications, codes. Um, I just want to be part of the community. I just want to be able to help, you know, and, uh, I hope you guys can approve me to be part of your, uh, planning commission, uh, committee.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Do we have a motion or any discussion or comment?
I make motion that the city council appoint Jose Chavez to the planning commission, completing the term vacated by Commissioner Gek expiring on December thirty first, two thousand twenty six.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks for volunteering.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I just wanna, I just wanna clarify, I am working out of town right now. I'm working on Longview. So, um, I'll try to make the meetings, but starting September or sooner, I'm gonna be retired, so. Thank you for for accepting my application. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks. Okay, item B, Juliet's house request.
Just, um, I'm sorry, but whoever was speaking, it was breaking up a little bit, so I don't know if it was my turn to talk.
Yes, Diane, if you could talk a little bit about the request of Juliet's house?
Yes, I can definitely do that. So we decided, uh, that we wanted to have a little bit more of an impact this year um, than just the random onesie twosies pinwheels, um, around Yamhill County. So we decided we would build, um, pinwheel installations that would be representational of how many children went through our prevention education program in, uh, the last fiscal year. So what we're doing is installing pinwheel gardens that have three hundred and seventeen pinwheels. Each pinwheel represents ten children. So that's over three thousand children in Yamhill County School District that went through our prevention education programs. So what we would like to do, we've already have eight locations throughout the county where we've already put these in. Uh, but we're looking for a place in Carlton, so you guys can join the party with us. Um, and would love to have an area with some really good visibility, so folks can stop by, take some selfies. Um, you know, tag where they are and tag Juliet's house, so we can share the awareness about National Child Abuse Prevention Month.
Thank you.
In a nutshell.
Thanks. Any discussion, thoughts? Comments? Folks?
We saw a publication, I'm assuming probably Lad Park.
Lad Park, yeah.
Sounds like a great idea, Diane.
Thanks, Shirley.
So Lad Park? That's what I think.
They have a picture. What did this look like?
Uh, Diane, do you have a picture of another installation that you've done?
I do not, because we're, we're doing them all differently based on the space that we're being given. So, um, what we've been trying to do for landscaping purposes is work on the perimeter of whatever area we've been allowed to use, so that way the mowers can still get in and mow the, the central part of the landscaping.
Is this what I saw going up in Yamhill recently at the, uh, near the flagpole? Nice.
Yeah, exactly that.
Where in the?
Right where Public Works entrance is.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay. Yeah, that's a great place to put it.
When do you anticipate putting up the structure, Diane?
Um, once we receive your approval, it would be before the end of the week.
Okay, oh, wow.
So, and she needs to be in contact with staff.
We'll take the information back with Bryant.
Okay. Okay.
We just
Um, Diane, if you can let, uh, Shannon know what day you're doing it, maybe some of us could possibly be available.
Yeah. I would love that, because it does, it takes four people about an hour to put in the whole thing, so. Yeah, we would love volunteers.
So do we need a motion on this, folks?
Um, or a consensus that they can put their installation in, uh, to Lad Park? And we will work with public works to make sure that all the money that's been in anything else needs to be can get around the park, but not disturb their installation.
Okay.
Yeah.
We're in agreement.
Good.
We're good, yeah.
We're good to go, Diane. If you could just be in contact with Amy and I tomorrow about plans of what day, uh, this week. I want to put it in, so we can coordinate with public works. That would be helpful.
That sounds fantastic. Thank you all so much, and thank you for supporting children in our communities. We couldn't do it without you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks all. Have a good night.
You too. Thanks. Okay, we are down to item six, citizen comments. Um, this section of the agenda allows members of the public to address the city council on any items off or on the agenda. When invited by the mayor, members of the public shall come forward, state your name and street address, and direct all comments to the mayor. Comments are typically limited to three minutes unless additional time is allowed by the mayor. Having said that, we start with items that are not on the current agenda. Do we, looks like we have.
See no hands raised at this time.
Okay, um, does anybody out there have any comments about items that are on the agenda?
I see no hands raised at this time.
Okay. We will close that section of the agenda and move on to the consent agenda. Do I have motion to approve the consent agenda?
Consent agenda. I second it.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Ordinances, resolutions, discussion and action items. Item A is L A twenty twenty four dash oh one comprehensive plan amendment, public hearing.
Mayor and council, I am pleased to begin this process of finalizing comprehensive plan updates. You've been working hard on this for the last eighteen months or so. And with that, I'm gonna hand it over to Scott.
Yeah, I am also gonna, I'm gonna hand it over back to the mayor. This is a public hearing, and so we'll have, we do have a script there, I think. And so there is some morality, uh, with, uh, a public hearing, and so I will ask the mayor at this time to do the introduction, uh, part of that. And that will assist where necessary.
Okay, so on the agenda this evening is a public hearing to consider proposed amendments to the Carlton Comprehensive Plan. City case file L A two zero two four dash zero one, section seventeen dot point. Do I have to read all of this? Yes. Okay.
Not too much.
Well, I, I just didn't, I didn't want to be reading something I didn't need to read, too. Okay, section seventeen point two one two point zero two zero of the Carlton Municipal Code identifies the type four procedure for conducting legislative public hearings. The decision before the council is a matter for recommendation from the planning commission for adoption of proposed comprehensive plan amendments. At this time, I will ask fellow counselors if there are any conflicts of interest or abstentions to declare. Okay. Hearing none, uh, we'll move on to, um, the order of the public hearing will be as follows. The first, there will be a brief oral, oral report from staff addressed to the council. This will be followed by counselor questions of staff from the council. Thereafter, any person attending tonight will be invited to present oral testimony. Um, staff will then be invited to comment on testimony or evidence presented. And finally, the council will close the hearing, deliberate, and decide on whether to move forward on a recommendation of support for the city council. So we are going to start with, back to Scott.
Okay, and just, uh, you know, we were looking at it, Amy and I were looking at each other. It's actually your, uh, you have a recommendation from the planning commission and you would be acting on it tonight. The council is the, uh, the body that takes action on an amendment for, uh, to the comprehensive plan, which is a comprehensive, comprehensive plan. I mean, it's, uh, a change here of every element, every chapter of the comprehensive plan. Um, I'm, uh, I'm just gonna identify a couple of exhibits here, uh, just for the record. And then I'm gonna turn it over to Steve Faust of Three J Consulting. Uh, he is the project planner, the consultant hired to uh, to, to put all of this together and, uh, conduct all of the community meetings. And Steve has a really good PowerPoint presentation tonight, uh, that just sort of, uh, puts it all in a big package there, sums it all up. Uh, but I just want to mention that, uh, yeah, you have a staff report to the, to the record this evening as part of your agenda. And that staff report identifies two key exhibits. Uh, the exhibit one, which is the draft comprehensive plan, uh, stated March of this year. And, uh, and then there is, uh, exhibit two, which is the comprehensive plan, um, appendix. And so that includes all of the, all of the inventories. Uh, that's also part of the comprehensive plan. Steve will go over that a little bit more, just, uh, so you, you have a good understanding of what the, the pending, pending stocks, document, I could say it. Uh, what's that about? Uh, I do want to mention to us, mother exhibits here, we have the, uh, staff report identifying documents received by others and others being uh, mostly D L C D, uh, the Department of Land Conservation and Development. They provided a, a letter of earlier, um, in the process, uh, prior to the planning commission hearing. And that was, uh, March, a letter dated March seventh, uh, two thousand twenty four. And, uh, staff has responded to, um, pretty much all of those comments. And, uh, Steve will address, uh, that in further detail. Um, we also have, uh, uh, exhibit that was received from, from ODOT. They were complimentary about the, uh, proposal there, no commentary. Uh, it was exhibit six, and we have for tonight, another exhibit that was just received, um, today at six eighteen, uh, just some additional comments from the Department of Land Conservation and Development. I'll say D L C D for short. And, uh, so you just received these and staff just received them too, again, just, uh, uh, just, uh, just now. So, um, these are relatively minor and we'll be able to address them tonight. Uh, but I, I want to make sure that we stick with, uh, the procedure that, uh, uh, we have with this public hearing. So we'll come back to, to this exhibit. Uh, at this time, I will turn over the rest of the staff presentations to Steve Faust of Three J Consulting.
Thank you, uh, Scott, and good evening, Mayor Watkins and counselors. As Scott said, I have a, a presentation to share with you this evening. The presentation really focuses on those, uh, changes that, um, were, uh, approved by planning commission, that the changes based on the comments received from D L C D and ODOT. Okay, can everyone, can everyone see the screen? Yeah. Great. I'm gonna start with some background information on the comprehensive plan. Great. I'm gonna start with some background information on the comprehensive plan. Um, the city in, uh, putting out a request for proposals to assist the city with the comprehensive plan identified some objectives for this project, and I thought I would just go through those briefly with you. Uh, those included addressing community needs and values through at least twenty forty-one, uh, engaging the community to ensure all opinions and viewpoints are considered and integrated into the plan, reflect local desires and an updated vision, be responsive to current conditions, be informed by existing plans and accurate data and metrics, encourage green energy and water conservation, strengthen livability in the face of rapid population growth and progress, offer multiple opportunities for robust involvement in a transparent and inclusive process, align with applicable adopted plans, policies, priorities, and regulations, and comply with federal, state, and local laws. And hopefully, that's what, um, we've done in the plan, and I will explain to you as we go through this presentation. Uh, again, just some brief background, uh, the comprehensive plan, uh, the purpose, uh, along with the zoning and, uh, land division ordinances are designed to implement Oregon statewide planning goals for the city of Carlton. So once this, uh, comprehensive plan update is approved by city council and acknowledged by, uh, the state, then it becomes the controlling document for land use in Carlton. You received the staff report on March sixteenth. That includes findings of fact, um, identifying compliance with state and local requirements for amending the plan. And I'll just recap, um, at their meeting on, uh, at their meeting on, or public hearing on, uh, March eleventh, Planning Commission approved the comprehensive plan amendment and the updates that we prepared in response to, um, state agencies and, um, additional, um, modifications proposed by, uh, Planning Commission themselves. And that's really gonna be the focus of the presentation this evening is, what, what, uh, modifications were made at the Planning Commission hearing. Um, that said, um, if anyone wants to go through, um, other elements of the plan in greater detail, uh, we are happy to do that. Uh, just a reminder of our process for the com- developing the comprehensive plan. We started by collecting a lot of those, um, factual reports and adopted plans, um, and going through those to, um, develop, uh, the factual basis, um, as it's called, for the comprehensive plan goals, policies, and objectives. At the same time, uh, we did a lot of community outreach to develop the twenty forty-two Carlton vision. So at the same time, we were establishing kind of where is Carlton today, uh, we were asking um, the community how you want to grow in the future. We then used all that information to develop the goals, policies, and objectives, and those elements are combined, uh, and comprise the comprehensive plan. Uh, a refresher on the community engagement, um, activities for the comprehensive plan. We conducted six meetings with our project advisory committee around the vision and comprehensive plan. Uh, we received, uh, two hundred and seventy-eight online survey responses in both English and Spanish. We conducted ten community conversations, uh, in partnership with our project advisory committee with, uh, different groups throughout the ci- uh, city. And we conducted three, uh, what we called Carlton Summit events, which were larger public meetings where, um, folks were able to come and comment and interact with their neighbors and help craft the comprehensive plan. You may recall, I believe, um, that, uh, this body approved, uh, the comprehensive plan vision. This isn't the full vision, it's just the, the key elements, but with, along with each of these, um, there's a paragraph that describes, uh, the element in greater details, but in twenty forty-two, Carlton is a great little town with rural heritage and small-town character, family-friendly neighborhoods, a prosperous economy, and well-planned infrastructure. Um, I'm going back to that, uh, appendix that, um, Scott mentioned and I mentioned earlier. Um, so basically, when we began the comprehensive plan process, our approach was to update that information with, um, existing plans, available plans, where, wherever, um, we could, um, get a hold of them, and then at the same time, we try to consolidate and simplify that information. Um, for example, in the previous comprehensive plan, large chunks of the transportation system plan was included in that appendix. What we try to do is, um, include basically like an executive summary of the transportation system plan, and then refer people to the transportation system plan itself for more detail, and that way, uh, the appendix is, uh, more easily readable and accessible for most people, and for those who want that additional detail, they can go to the transportation system plan, uh, you know, for that information. Um, so we reviewed a number of planning documents, including the existing comp plan, the two thousand nine transportation system plan. I will note here that there are notes in the comprehensive plan and appendix that, uh, indicate that that's the section of the plan and the appendix will be updated, uh, when the transporta- the new transportation system plan is adopted, so that the two documents align. Um, the stormwater master plan, water master plan, parks development plan, uh, the, uh, Yamhill County Natural Hazards Mitigation Plan, and the Carlton addendum, Carlton addendum to that plan, and the Mercury TMDL implementation plan, and I'll talk a little bit more about some of those as we progress here. Um, in terms of developing policies, what we do is we start with existing comprehensive plan policies. Uh, we look through the, those background reports and inventories that I just mentioned in the appendix and um, see what that tells us about new policies that are needed. Uh, we look to other communities, for examples of, of just, we want to cover a broad basis of, um, the types of policies that are being considered in different communities, and bring that information to Carlton for consideration. And then I mentioned we had, uh, several policy advise- or project advisory committee meetings just focused on the policies as well as specifically Carlton Summit Number Two, and, uh, the associated online questionnaire was focused on policies. So, again, what I'm going to present to you today, uh, are the changes that were made in response to state comments and, um, uh, changes that, uh, Planning Commission recommends, um, that were of their, you know, through their discussion. Um, and then, um, Scott, when I'm done with that, I'll, I'll defer to you as to how to proceed. I do have a few slides in response to the comments we received today from DLCD, but I don't want to speak out of turn, so I will hand it over to you at that point, and we can go from there. Um, so first, we receive, in response to state recommendations regarding goal five, that's natural resources, scenic and historic areas and open spaces. They asked us to add objective one C, saying, provide notice to the, uh, Department of State Lands if development or a land division is in the vicinity of a wetland or an area of predominantly hydric soils as shown on the state wetland inventory. Um, I'll mention these three are, are mainly procedural recommendations. Um, also to goal five, they asked us to add objective three D, three D, apply baseline protections as described in Oregon Administrative Rules to any sites on the National Register of Historic Places. And then we had removed a policy that they asked us to, uh, restore, which, uh, re- reads, if archaeological sites are identified in the city, coordinate with the state Historic Preservation Office to establish a review procedure that meets state requirements. A few more items, uh, regarding goal five. They asked us to add two policies, one that reads, preserve and maintain creeks and floodplain areas as open space to provide a natural stormwater and drainage system. And policy six, preserve the water quality, groundwater recharge, and flood storage functions of wetlands. Um, so Planning Commission approved of those additions. And then in the background report, they asked that we, um, add a little bit of information from that TMDL, um, implementation plan, which I'll mention again later. In this case, that the North Yamhill River, Yamhill River and Han Creek are, uh, essential salvinid habitat. Moving on to goal six, in response to state recommendations, uh, goal six covers air, water, and land resources quality. They asked that we add an objective that reads, development within the city shall comply with applicable state and federal water quality regulations. Um, objective one E that reads, in, uh, re- uh, the city will respond to directives issued in a total maximum daily load, that's what TMDL stands for, implementation plan for any waterways within the city that are declared water quality limited by the Department of Environmental Quality. And, and, um, the city of Carlton is, uh, designated as a manag- as, as the, a designated management agency for the North Yamhill River and is assigned a seventy-five percent reduction from current levels of mercury in non-permitted urban stormwater, and I believe, um, that this information may be new to some of you, but that implementation plan, um, did go through a city process, I, I believe, of some sort of approval, so we were just adding that information into that objective and then into the background report. Uh, goal seven, natural hazards. Um, uh, the state a- asked that we add objective one C, which says, identify and map potential areas for landslides, high, moderate, and low. Um, objective four C, development and implement- meant programs to coordinate main- maintenance and mitigation activities to reduce risk to public infrastructure from severe winter storms. I should mention here, the basic comment on goal seven was that we had, um, a number of policies referring to natural hazards in general, and the basic direction was that in the National Hazard Mitigation Plan, the Yamhill County, um, NHMP, and the Carlton Addendum to that, there are six hazards that are s- mentioned by name, and the basic recommendation was to have policies that address each of those hazards, so that's what we attempted to do here. Um, objective four D, evaluate ash impact on stormwater, on the stormwater drainage system, utility infrastructure, transportation network, public facilities, and develop mitigation actions. So these all basically come from that natural, uh, hazard mitigation plan. And then finally, goal twelve, transportation. Um, as Scott mentioned, ODOT was, uh, very supportive overall, but asked us to, uh, restore, uh, a policy and associated objectives specifically related to the, uh, facility that they, um, operate, Highway forty-seven. So, preserve the function, capacity, level of service, and safety of state Highway forty-seven, coordinate all transportation activities impacting Highway forty-seven with ODOT, um, conform to ODOT standards and practices within transporta- with transportation issues concerning Highway forty-seven, and coordinate with ODOT on all land use decisions that impact Highway forty-seven. So that was ODOT's one, um, comment or request or recommendation. Um, and finally, I'll go through, uh, the, uh, changes that Planning Commission recommend, recommended through their discussion. So in regards to, um, goal one, they asked, which is citizen involvement, uh, they asked that we add objective one C, which says, leverage community groups and partnerships to assist in increasing our reach and ability to communicate with community members. Um, two more for that same goal, uh, for objective three A for goal one, they, uh, recommended apprising city staff of effective and ineffective means for informing community manners, members on matters related to the planning process and pending processes. Um, and, um, three B, which says solicit interest from high school students for service on the commission, specific to an advisory role for commission and staff to be in perspective in reaching underrepresented populations. So those were the three, uh, recommendations regarding goal one. They asked that we add a po- uh, policy seven to goal five, which reads, work with the Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife to update the factual background information in the comprehensive plan appendix. Um, another policy to goal seven, work with Yamhill County and neighboring jurisdictions to update that natural hazard mitigation plan by January twenty twenty-six to comply with new requirements from the Federal Emergency Management Agency. Um, a couple of things about this one. Number one, um, this was, um, noted in the comments from the state that, uh, the natural hazard mitigation plan would have to be updated by January twenty twenty-six to comply with new FEMA requirements. And, um, through discussion, Planning Commission, uh, basically recognized that, um, that's a process that's gonna, uh, take a little bit of time, so, and, and it's not really feasible to do in this particular moment. So this policy is a commitment to, uh, work with Yamhill County and other jurisdictions to, um, address those new FEMA requirements by the, the date that we were given by DLCD. So that's the origin of this, of this, uh, policy addition. Um, there was another one, um, objective two A to goal eight. Goal eight is parks and recreation, and they asked that we add a po- uh, an objective that says, work with cycle Yamhill Co- County to establish and promote trails and other outdoor recreation projects. And then finally, there was a request to updi- date, uh, the information in the background report regarding the Yamhill Carlton School District information, uh, Yamhill, um, Carlton School District, as it was, uh, the information was out of date, just regarding the names of the schools, um, and things of that nature. And then finally, um, staff updates. Uh, basically, as we went through, um, in response to some state requirements, or the state recommendations to make some updates to the background report, um, we decided to, in that same spirit, so it reads as a cohesive document, um, update, uh, you know, information for consistency throughout in a few other sections besides the ones uh, recommended by the state. So we added a little, uh, additional information, um, to that appendix for regarding citizen involvement, regarding natural resources, uh, recreation, economy, housing, all with those documents I referenced earlier, um, uh, documents that have already been approved by city council, um, public facilities, transportation, energy, and urbanization. So we feel that those, um, changes were all made in the spirit of addressing the recommendations from, uh, the state and, uh, uh, changes approved by Planning Commission. So that, uh, is the end of the changes that were approved by Planning Commission. Um, I'm happy to proceed however we'd like. Um, I'll, I'll turn to either Mayor Watkins or Scott in regards to, I'm happy to take questions on these changes and, and the comprehensive plan, uh, recommendation from Planning Commission. Um, I, I also have a few slides to address today's, uh, comments from the state, if that's preferred.
Scott?
Well, first I'll, I just add to what Steve had to say, uh, the Planning Commission provided staff, uh, some latitude here for a couple of those policies are not verbatim what the Planning Commission described, so I just want to make that clarification if they're the planning commissioner. Did we say that? Well, he gave the staff the latitude to, to kind of create a couple of things there, but, uh, uh, but we, we feel we're well, well within the boundary of, of the direction that was provided to council and, uh, council, planning commission, and, uh, planning commission, uh, we offered it up, uh, saying, hey, we can, uh, bring this back, uh, as a document, uh, they decided, uh, to, um, uh, approve with, uh, providing staff general re- uh, recommendations to add the policies that Steve identified there. Um, yeah, Steve, uh, answered the, the, the natural hazards mitigation while there, I think, uh, we, we have something new here, and I'm curious to see what Steve has. We haven't had an opportunity to talk about it. Again, this was quite disappointing that, that it's received, uh, from so late. And I'm not even sure if it's the same person, Steve. Is it the, the, it's okay, the city attorney is shaking his head. Um, what happens when you post a document on DLCD's website or amendment, uh, they farm it out to all of the specialty staff? So it's not just one person at DLCD. Uh, if it's a transportation-related amendment, it goes to the transportation specialist. If it's housing, it goes to the housing. And so we might have received comments from Amanda, I think, from, for the, uh, natural hazards, and then we've got a new person, uh, I don't know what DLCD here was answered to. Uh, so, um, there are some things here that, some of them very minor, uh, they're shown in red, uh, which is, yeah, great, sure, we'll change the title. Um, there's other things here that I'm, we're, we're, we're happening in some degree, I haven't had a chance to talk. City attorney is also here tonight, uh, concerned about some dates, uh, and whether or not it's, it's feasible, and whether the, the count, uh, the city has control of, uh, of some of these things too. So, uh, uh, that, that's the only cautionary note. Of uh, of some of these things too. So uh, uh, that, that's the only cautionary note. That I, that I have tonight. So um, that, that's uh, that, that's it for me. I. Okay, uh, I guess Steve has some more thoughts on the that, uh, what was received today. And then we can jump into questions of staff.
So if you'd like, I'd be happy to just uh, summarize and, and respond to those comments from. Um, from, that we received from DLCD today. It'll be pretty quick. Okay. Um, so just going through this, this email, um, if you have it all in front of you, um, A, um. Is, says title of chapter, they, they asked us to change the chapter title from. Areas subject to natural disasters and hazards to areas subject to natural hazards. Um. I don't know that the ti- titles of chapters have to be consistent with the statewide planning goals, but. Um, I don't know that that uh, is a big um, um, issue for us. I, I would have no, no, I. I would recommend that we go ahead and make that change, or I, I see no reason not to. Um, B, re- is regarding, and I don't have this on the screen here. Oh, actually, I do. B, um, starts by saying that um. We mentioned in the comprehensive plan, the two thousand and six Yamhill County Natural Hazards Mitigation Plan. Well, in those updates that I just read to you, we updated not only the comprehensive plan policies. But the entire back uh, background report, that appendix, with information from the twenty twenty plan. And the Carlton Addendum. So at this point, there is a mention in the comprehensive plan of the two thousand and six plan. Um, as I show here, if we just strike that out and refer to the twenty twenty plan, it's, it's more of a typo than anything. Um, however, the state goes on to talk about the lack of um. Our uh, including information from that natural hazard mitigation plan in the comprehensive plan. And I think that they looked at the comprehensive plan, the primary document itself, and not to the appendix. Where we did update all of the information on natural hazards with information from that twenty twenty plan. So that's my interpretation of, of B is that if we just change the date in the comprehensive plan itself. We've already added all the information, including regarding Cascadia earthquake and volcanic events. Winter storms. I can't remember all six off the top of my head, but all that information is in the um, appendix. Um, Item C uh, is basically um, um, some word changes regarding. Uh, Objective One D, which I think maintains the spirit of what was intended. But uses some language that uh, that the state prefers. Um, Item D, they suggest an additional objective. Uh, work, work to accomplish the mitigation actions that the mayor and city council approved by this certain resolution on the certain date. Uh, again, I think that's in regards to the Natural Hazards Mitigation Plan. I'm just saying that the uh, staff will uh, work to. Make those changes. Um, and then modifying Policy Five, I mentioned this um. That there's some additional FEMA requirements that jurisdictions are required to um, address in their natural hazard mitigation plan. They originally gave us a date of January twenty twenty-six, and then in this commentary. They informed us that the date is actually December twenty-first, twenty twenty-five. So that, that was a change in their direction. So we crafted that policy around the date they gave us, and now they're giving us um, a different date. Um, so just to, so that's it. That's what I have regarding the comments received today. Um, and we um, I'm happy to answer questions. Um, that will help you uh, reach your decision for today. Thank you for your time.
Uh, Scott, I have a question on uh, Goal Eight, Section Two A. It says specifically to work with a certain group. Cycle Yamhill County. I'm not opposed to working with that. I just wondered if, if we're, if that's normal to see, like. Work with Cycle Yamhill County to establish and promote trails and other outdoor recreation projects. Like, do we have to name a certain group? Or could it not be?
I think you, uh, the group's been around for a while. Yeah, all of a sudden they changed their name next year or where they go away or something like that. Uh, so it would be good for posterity to, uh, you can identify. I, I've seen comprehensive plans identify um, various groups, uh, some nonprofits that have been around for a long time. Um, I, I think it's good to say, you know, similar groups or something bad. It's just to, uh. Um, so I, I don't see any harm.
Yeah, it just struck me because in the rest of the document, you don't really see specific groups outside of ODOT. Um, written relation to forty-seven, but there's, there's lots of groups that, you know, we work with in the, you know. Comprehensive plan, whether it's recreation, whether it's things. And so, um, I knew that was a planning commission recommendation, and I have. No qualms with working with Cycle Yamhill County, but I just kind of thought that we're just listing under an objective to work specifically with them.
That narrows the.
If it narrows, or like you said, they changed their name, or they dissolved next year, or they, some other cycle group wants to, you know.
Yes. Oh, I, I kind of take a look at that, but it's a, it's a good comment that we may just say, uh, similar or similar groups unless that's not. Added, we could, we could add that. Would be used to have that condition to that. So it, it wouldn't seem like.
Limiting the line down.
Yeah. Okay, so yeah, I've detected a policy, policy two under Goal Eight, which is the recreational uh, goal. Uh, policy, uh, that's objective, uh, Two A, Steve. Um, the, the idea here is work with cycle. Yamhill County at similar groups to establish and promote trails and other. Outdoor recre- uh, recreation projects.
Can you say org- organizations instead?
Organizations. That's a, that's a better one. Yeah.
Very simple.
Other organizations.
But you're still putting their, their name, basically title on that. If you're leaving. Their group or organization name in there.
Well, that's where I was going, like, and I know this came from the planning commission, so I wasn't, I don't know what the thought was behind that, like. Why couldn't it just say community organizations to promote this versus?
Community recreational organizations, or some, that, without specifically pinpointing a, a group.
Yeah, I, the council wants, I, I, I don't, is there, there's no legal harm, uh, let's just see here, but by adding or subtracting.
Uh, not at all. And I know that the reason Cycle Yamhill County is specifically mentioned is because Cycle Yamhill County provided a presentation. I bet the planning mission helped their hearing on the comprehensive plan.
We heard it too. Oh, it just, it struck me, that's why I circled it, because I thought it was kind of specific.
It's one of those places where you don't necessarily need a specific group, right?
And yeah, the option is to uh, strike it, uh, or with, um. Yeah, cycle organizations to, something like that. Community recreational organizations, I know.
Are we, if I may, Mayor, um, are you gonna, we're, we're kind of at the point where we can ask our questions for the, the whole gamut of everything? Um, Exhibit Three, can you help explain to me? How that relates to the, I, it, again, just struck me that there's a lot of deleted items in there. There's some modified. Um, is that just kind of? How does that relate to the document in Exhibit One?
Um, Scott, can you remind me which is Exhibit Three? Oh, is that the track changes version of the?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Sure, sure. Um, again, um, I think the primary directive we received from the state was. In the, in the natural hazards section, they asked us to update the information on natural hazards. With uh, information from the more recent natural hazards mitigation plan. So if you see, so I think that's where the majority of deletions you see exist, because we replaced that with more updated maps and information. And then in that same spirit, as I mentioned in the presentation. Um, and based on other adopted documents like the Transportation System Plan, Water Master Plan, Parks Plan. We added additional background information so that um, in the state's eyes, we have. Um, again, I, we try to add kind of an executive summary of those documents and then refer to the documents themselves. So we have them listed in that and, and, and a summary of information in that uh, appendix that is the basis of our goals and policies and, and. Objectives, but for additional detail, people can go to the documents themselves. So I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, it is.
I have a question for number five. There's a part about hydro soils. I showed him, showed him the glory. Is this, um. This be, be just, I mean, a lot of this in earth is because the part, the part of lands is going to be. Close to Irish, we have these types of activities and possible values.
Yeah, I just pulled it up there to. Three, seven, and it's, uh, which should go lowest on, one C. Well, I noticed the department. So, um, we are required, interesting how, uh, we are required by law to do that. Uh. And uh, so, uh, it's one of those objectives that, um, uh, we could. Probably cite the rule or statute where that, that's found of. Uh, so anytime a, a land division, uh, that is located in what we know of. What, there are some new sorts that is out there for that, for that purpose. Uh, yeah, we, we have to send. Uh, a, a notice to the Department of State Lands and, uh, yeah, they, they will, uh. Usually respond uh, prior to the beginning of the, of the hearing. So, uh, this was, looks like it was an addition. That was suggested and possibly, I think, uh, Steve, correct me if I'm wrong, this, this is. I had one, uh, that, uh, we received from DLCD. Um, and uh, so, uh, there's no, I guess there's no harm in this one. Um. But it's all, yeah, go ahead.
Could you repeat? I, I couldn't hear which uh, item we're referring to right now.
Yeah, that, so this is a Goal Five. Under Policies and, and Objectives, Policy One, and the, and it's Object, Objectives. One C, and you have it underlined indicating that it's an addition. To what, uh, probably is what the state, I'm guessing, uh, wanted as an addition there. And typically, it's a providing notice to the Department of, uh, State Lands if development of land division is in the vicinity of a wetland. Or areas predominantly hydroic soil, soils. Uh, so, um, yeah, we, oh. We do that regularly. We're required to do it. Uh, and that's, I, I guess that's part of my response. I, I don't, was there?
When, when we notify them, do they take some action or they're just? Does that depend?
Well, they, yeah, so, um, very often we'll, I, I guess, I don't want to go down the rabbit hole too much here. When a, when we know that a, a project is in close proximity to a sensitive area, wetland, stream, creek. Uh, we inform the applicant that yes, we expect you to do, hire a, a wetlands biologist. And do a wetlands delineation. Uh, and there's actually a rule and statute that talks about those thresholds as well. And so, uh, we had, you know, we, we expect that. We make it uh, known as part of the pre-op summary. That we provide that that will be an item that we will not, uh, deem the application complete. It will not go forward until you provide us. With that wetland biologist delineation. And we, once we get that, we send it out to the Department of State Lands. And they, they are, uh, responsible for concurring with the delineation. It might be. You know, it might be a number of things, uh, might be mitigation with it. But when there is mitigation. Uh, that's often the case when the Department of State Lands will review it and concur with it, or might, uh. Uh, suggest some other things. So, um, that's kind of an interesting, uh, objective here. Uh, but it's not of any, uh, I don't, again, I don't see any harm to it.
Awesome. What else?
We're just trying to get a little better idea of what it means.
If I could add, Scott, it seemed to me that. There were a number of recommendations in those first recommendations from the state that were. Um, just kind of stating, like Scott said, things that the city already does, or things that are, are required and are in statute and in code. Um, um, you know, we added them because they suggested that they should be in the comprehensive plans. Um, you know, I found some of it a little bit, uh, redundant since it is, you know, as Scott says, it is a practice the city already does. But, uh, we, we and the Planning Commission, um, recommended that we make those additions, um, based on those state recommendations.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Going once? Okay.
Just, sorry, Mayor, uh, we should strike the S in area. It references singular area or in areas. I wasn't sure which.
The S in area.
Space area or a space grid.
Hmm.
Thank you, I saw that too.
Or in areas of predomin, yeah. Probably meant in areas of predominantly, be my guess. Anything else? Next? Where do we go from here?
Okay, um, so the, the script now will, uh, say that, uh, uh. You should probably open, if I'm not mistaken, uh, we have a public hearing, an opportunity for those who are attending to.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Fine, I've got five picks here tonight. I don't know which one. Legislative hearing, that's the one. Okay.
Oh, yeah.
All right, so now we're opening the public hearings. And we have, well, we've had the oral report from you guys, right? Alrighty, um, are there any comments? Well, it said staff will be invited to provide comment or testimony. Any comments from the?
So, uh, yeah, if there's anybody, uh, attending tonight that, uh, would, would like to address the council. Uh, the mayor has just opened the, the hearing, and so I believe this, this is the appropriate time.
Thanks, Scott. Hey, anybody got any comments, questions? I see one hand raised.
You want me to proceed?
Yes, sir. You're on.
Good. This is David Blanchard. I live at five seventy-four West Grant Street here in Carlton. Been here since nineteen seventy-four. In October this year, we will have been here for fifty years. We love Carlton. Anyway, um, I really want to second the counselor's comments about cycle versus recreational. To limit it to cycle does not seem reasonable. Um, to add that, to have it be recreational allows for. Other things besides cycle. In other words, don't narrow it. Broaden it, allow for input from not just one organization, but from any organization that wants to speak up. Um, secondly, um, I noticed on page forty-five, I don't know how to refer to things very well, except by page. But on page forty-five of tonight's packet, which I think is either nine and ten of the, of the, uh, comprehensive. Plan. Um, let me get down to it, or up to it, as the case may. Um, let me get down to it or up to it as the case may be. There is on page forty-five, the goals, policies and objectives. Policy number three, which we didn't talk about specifically tonight, says initiate a process to phase out the agricultural holdings designation. Um, assign new urban land designations to areas that are currently within the agricultural holding district. Agricultural uses will continue anyway. I I have a a concern about when and how that's going to be initiated. Um, and I'm wondering why we need to do away with the agricultural holding designation. And isn't it objective to make it more easily developed, if you will? Would not want that to be the case. I strongly feel strongly about the wetlands and uh. I think most of those agricultural holdings, if you look at the maps around the city. And we need to carefully be sure that we're looking at the wetlands and drainage, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And um, I would simply want to raise my hand that say that when that initiated process happens. If it's going to happen uh to change that designation, number one, I'd kind of like to know why we're changing the agricultural designation. What's the need? Um, does that change, make it easier for development? And um, uh, how would one have good input when the time comes? Let me see if there's any others. So that's two of my thoughts. That I had. So that would, that would then be be the question, what is the purpose of this policy? Why does it need to be changed? What will the change had, give us direction towards easier or more difficult development and the protection of of wetlands? I'm be open to any input that anyone has.
Are there any responses or comments for David?
Uh, staff can provide a comment. Uh, it is, yeah, with a public hearing here, we're uh accepting uh oral com- uh. Comments and staff can come back to answer to all of them or uh we could go individually to. Go up the council where it's fresh in the mind here. I'm happy to answer the questions that uh we're we're asked by the by Mr. Blanchard.
The only, I I I remembered the other thing and you can decide to handle it however you want to do. I would have thought the it would have been great to have in the plan, not one map, but two. Um, I had trouble uh really looking at the map, the. You couldn't get the street names um on it. It was, it was not easy to open that map and really see what was what. I would have loved to have seen two maps, one which would have been what was. And the second one as to what's proposed rather than just one map. Maybe that exists somewhere, but I didn't see it.
David, were you?
No.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, thank you. I think we just addressed it in as they come up.
Yeah, that's it. Why don't you, you wanted Scott, if you wanted?
Okay, I'm sure, yeah, thank you. I um, uh, Mr. Blanchard, my name is Scott White. I'm a contract planner for the for the city and uh have been involved in in this. And uh, I I'm I'm gonna just uh kind of answer what you have. Great question, by the way, on um. The agricultural holding uh district. Uh, that policy three is a little bit more than uh what the current comprehensive plan says. And uh, so it is a, it is a new policy to to some degree here. Um, there is a a description, the agricultural holding uh designated is is a zone of the city. And the purpose of that zone is to uh to allow agricultural uses. Most of the properties that are zones throughout the city have agricultural uses to it, but in in a short term period. Um, all of the agricultural holding properties that have that that's that zone to it are inside. The city urban growth bound, inside the city limits and the uh city's urban growth boundary. And the idea is that inside the city, uh, urban services, sewer, water, uh, storm detention. Uh, all of those urban services are uh are are provided to to these properties um uh as they develop. Uh, in recent years, uh, the city has seen certain prop- uh properties uh develop. This has been mostly to the uh southeastern portion of 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 town. Uh, JR Meadows projects and phases there that were once agricultural holding zone. And the city looked at those and saw that uh utility stubs were were available. And rezoned uh these these agricultural holding zones to to uh the respective zoning. Uh, that that you see on on that map, which is 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 kind of small, but I I will mention that the city's website has a larger version. And uh, we can direct you to that where that's located.
I I did go there, I, but but again, there was one map, not two, but go ahead.
So um, so it is a a policy that that is somewhat nebulous as to timing on when that would occur. And there is no date. Uh, one of the things that the city will do probably in a year or so is initiate uh what's called housing needs analysis. And it's a study of how much land remains inside city limits. To meet the future demand of housing, how much capacity we have supply to meet the demand at a twenty-year horizon. And so uh, that will be a a matter of of separate public hearing in the future. There is no date for that. It's probably something that the city will seek a separate grant for to to fund or uh consult like uh, like Steve Faust who just uh presented there. And uh, and and we'll look at how much land remains inside the urban growth boundary. And strategies that that the city can employ. To to develop land focused inside the urban growth boundary first. Before expanding the urban growth boundary. And so that's what we're looking at here are some properties that are are currently zone AH. That may lend themselves in the future to uh to to being developed for for housing. I guess that's in a nutshell, that we want to make sure that that we have that, have a policy ready for that. But it would not occur until after we understand exactly how much land is is necessary for a twenty-year horizon, new twenty-year horizon.
Well, thank you. I I, if nothing else, we heightened the awareness hopefully of our council. Um, that this process is ahead of us and uh. I I I, I guess I raise my hand to say I'd be really interested when that time comes to participate in that. And hopefully I'll know when it happens, et cetera. Um, some of, some of the AH really does impact the wetlands very, very much. And um, I think we need to be real careful as we move through that process of changing AH to some of the designation. And the process by which it becomes usable or buildable, if you will.
Thank you, David. Any other questions?
No, I hope you just heard my comment on cycle versus recreational. I want to support counselors' position on that.
Yeah. Thank you. Yeah.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, everyone, for all your service. God bless you.
Thanks, David. Do you have any other questions, comments? I'm not seeing any. Okay. If there are no other questions or comments, um. We're going to go ahead and close the hearing. And turn it over to council for deliberation and uh recommendation. Is that correct?
Sorry, there were no other.
There were no other comments? No. Oh, now we've got one. Hold on a minute. Okay.
Hold on, I'm getting my camera on here. Hi, I'm Amanda from Homeward Bound Pets and I think I missed my time to talk. Did I?
No, no. No, you're okay.
Okay, I have never done this before, so I was just waiting patiently and didn't want to interrupt anybody that was talking. So um, I'm just doing this for um Ronnie, our executive director today. She couldn't be here tonight. Yeah.
Yeah, you, we, you've, you've got a little, wait, you're a couple of. Couple of more items down the, down the list.
Then, okay, that's all I need to know, then I will sit here quietly. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Alrighty, where were we? All right, so we're closing the um. Comments. And it's back to the council now to deliberate and decide on whether to forward a recommendation of support to the city council.
And yeah, that that's a bad, uh, that's an error of the script.
About to say, wait a minute, are we forwarding it to?
Themselves.
Yes.
So that, yeah, we, this is what happens when you modify the script with the planning commission for the city council. So uh, yeah, apologize that uh, yeah, you're, you're actually, yeah, deliberating and uh making a decision uh tonight. Uh, unless you feel uncomfortable about something, um. Uh, this has no clock to it. Uh, the city manager will probably say, hey, we've got a lot of other things that we want to, we want to do. But uh, unlike uh private development projects, there there is a hundred and twenty day clock to to this. Uh, so uh, I want to make sure that the council feels comfortable with all of these these policies. Uh, the this document here. Um, so uh, yeah, this would be the time to talk more about uh any concerns that you have. Uh, regarding the policies in a draft form. Um, and after that, uh, a motion uh is recommend, recommend, yeah.
A motion, okay. What?
No, just somebody's not muted.
Okay, so it's for the council to deliberate and.
And then.
Motion, motion to what?
If you wanted to, there's an ordinance in your packet. And if you were comfortable. Reading of the ordinance. And then you would.
Oh, right. Yeah. Okay.
The ordinance. Your very tiny packet.
How does that go with the changes that we were discussing made tonight? Are we?
Yeah.
Are you making?
Would adopt them as a venue. That's what the council is.
Does anybody from the council want to start a conversation?
Like raising your hand, Grant. No, I thought Grant was raising his.
Oh. We all did. Okay, um, yeah, go.
My only comment is just in viewing this and all the work and all the time we've spent so months and months. I think we're in a good place and I feel comfortable moving forward. That's my comment.
Yeah, I think just pointing out what Mr. Blanchard said, I I shared the same concerns. And this has been kind of a long process, you know what I mean? And then I think it was Jennifer or somebody explained that a little bit deeper. And I've already kind of forgotten what she said about the ag holding, but thank you for explaining that again. But I mean, I know there was, we were talking about tax liability and things like of that nature, and there was a lot of discussion about it.
Any other comments? Discussion, questions? Do we? Then move toward a motion?
If you move towards a motion, the first motion would be to for the council to hear ordinance twenty twenty-four seven fifty by title only.
Folks? Do you have a motion?
I move that we um, um, hear ordinance twenty twenty-four dash seven fifty. For. By title only, title only.
Okay.
All in favor? Oh.
This one's majority.
Hi.
Alright. Part was, I wasn't sure how that. Very sporadic. This twenty twenty-four dash seven fifty in ordinance amending the Carlton Comprehensive Plan in its entirety and adopting the amended Comprehensive Plan.
The second motion, should you choose to go forward with the to. To approve.
Yeah, accept the first.
Except the first reading. Except the first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-four seven fifty and this one would be a roll call.
Will this one go back to the second reading as typical next month?
So is there a motion?
A motion to approve reading of ordinance twenty twenty-four dash seven five zero.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, and you need to do a roll call though.
All right, Council President Skipper, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counselor Ward Mullen, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counselor Brandell, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counselor Erickson, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counselor Thompson Riser, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counselor. Hill, how do you vote?
Aye.
And Mayor Watkins, how do you vote?
Aye.
I have a question.
We are always required to have a second reading if the ordinance passes unanimously on the first reading or charter authorizes us to pass it in one meeting. But my recommendation is with things that are important like this comprehensive plan. That in order to provide the most amount of uh, the most opportunity for public engagement, that we don't hold two readings in one meeting. But that we hold the two readings at two separate meetings, as long as there's no time concerns.
So basically, we are done with that at this time. At this, done with this subject at this time.
We'll read it again.
Next month. Alrighty. So now we are moving on to item C, community grant awards.
The ordinance twenty twenty. Oh, nine nomination. This is the second reading of the ordinance.
Do we have? We need a motion.
Make a motion that the city, move the city, uh, city council authorized the second reading of ordinance twenty twenty-four dash seven forty-nine by title only.
There a second?
Second. This is a majority vote, so ironing.
Okay, ironing.
Aye.
Aye.
Pose. Alrighty.
Ordinance twenty twenty-four dash seven four nine and ordinance establishing chapter one point zero six of the Carlton Municipal Code relating to nominations for city offices. Move that the city council accept a second reading of ordinance twenty twenty-four dash seven four nine.
Counselor, Council President Skipper, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counselor Ward Mullen, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counselor Brandell, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counselor Erickson, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counselor Thompson Riser, how do you vote?
Aye.
Counselor Hill, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mayor Watkins, how do you vote?
Aye. Alrighty.
Now we're moving on to items. Community grant awards.
Yes. And now we have. Homeward Bound Pets.
Also have with current. Also there.
Okay, let's see, Amanda. Amanda, go first, yes.
Okay, hi, everybody. Okay, so first one I've done this, so. Um, I'm just here to speak on behalf of Homeward Bound Pets. My name's Amanda Golden and I've been the shelter manager there for four years now. So um. So we just, yeah, again, I've never done this before, so I don't exactly know what to say. Um, we, I want to talk about the cats that we took in last year, um, in two thousand twenty three. Um, we have a total of five that came from Carlton and one of them. Was one that was actually dumped on one of your residents. She had a ring camera and could see the end of her driveway. And she thought somebody dumped off a package into the mud puddle and it turned out it was a cat. And it was a very injured cat, and so she rushed it to us. It was pretty late on a Thursday. And we were able to save the cat, but just for this guy's medical care, cost us over three thousand dollars. Um, and it was a lot, a lot, but he got adopted. That's the most important thing, very sweet cat. Um, and then we had four other cats that came in, three that were from the same household and two of those. Had been spayed in two thousand twenty, long before they came to us. Uh, and they ended up having what's called ovarian remnants. So we ended up spending additional four thousand dollars. Going in and doing exploratory hormone tests to remove the ovarian remnants, so. All of them found homes as well, but we just really wanted to say thank you for Carlton's support. Um, you guys have been wonderful and I had a very great experience at the Carlton vet with a dog that we needed to get. X-rays for for bone cancer. Um, and so we really just wanted to say how much we really appreciate and value Carlton and. The money that you've helped to support Homeward Bound Pets. Um, we are in the process of building a new shelter and I don't know if any of you have been out to the shelter, but. We did have a house that was over a hundred years old and housed cats in it for forty years. Um, so the entire place, the structures, everything, we had to take down all the houses. They just were not safe to house cats in anymore. Um, so we're starting to build for the new shelter. We've put in water lines, we've done fire hydrants and. New power poles, the whole nine yards, and we're getting ready to start hopefully the dig soon. Um, but we still do have a few cats there and of course we also have dogs in our care as well. Um, and so, yeah, we just want to come on here and say how, you know, thankful we are for your guys' support for all these years and it's been really appreciative. Um, and hopefully we can get back to having a bigger shelter, safe shelter. Um, and a shelter that all of us staff are working out of and the animals are all safe and heated and air conditioned, all those things that we need for them, so. Um, but we just really wanted to come here and say thank you very much for all your guys' support. Thank you. Do you guys have any questions?
Shouldn't see your building facility in the meantime, are you still operating your shelter with the cats and dogs in the same?
Everything is in, everything is in the same spot. Um, we still have the dogs and we've had to change the cats. Um, we ended up having to get rid of the trailers. Um, so when we first took down the houses. We tried to work out of a couple trailers and using one of those as isolation. Um, and in September, we got hit with pan leukemia. Um, and we had seven kittens from different litters just get incredibly sick. Um, we were able to save four of them, but it brought the reality that. We could not work that way without running water in each one of the buildings. It just was not a safe place to keep the cats anymore, so. We do still have a few cats, um, and of course, any cats that were adopted from us, uh, we will find space for there. We've kept a couple places in our office, a very small office to house them. Um, then we have the cabins, but we still do have the dogs and like I said, any cats that were adopted from us will make space for and take them back as always.
Thank you. Any other question? Okay. Where are we then just?
I would thank Ronnie right now for her time and go to Caitlin and allow her the same opportunity.
Yes. Okay, thank you. Caitlin.
Hello.
You're good.
Good to see you all, thank you. Um, yeah, so just wanted to first off say thank you for, you know, the funds that we were. Were we able to get last year from the city, so thank you for that. They were used well. Just a little. Debrief on what we were able to do last year, including those funds. Um, with our care packages, we were able to give fifty care packages in Yamhill County. Um, and those are valued at two hundred and twenty five dollars each. That's just our initial care package. I did include, and I'm not sure if each of you have that, just kind of a breakdown of what all those care packages and surgery packages, what those include. Um, and then we were also able to give sixty four thousand dollars in financial assistance just in Yamhill County, which is amazing. Um, so the application that we turned in was asking for funds to help continue. Giving giving those care packages, so we have, um, kind of since we began with our first care package, we've developed some different other. Um, packages, so we have our surgery pack, we have our radiation package. And we have our road to recovery package, so the funds that we hope to get from the city would go to any of those packages. To to fund any of that and I did mention in our application, we really try to utilize local businesses. To fill items in those packages, so a lot of items come from our local businesses. So we'll see, you'll see items from rough cut soap here in Carlton, gift cards from. You know, the coffee shops here in town, things like that, so. Um, yeah, we're just continuing forward with helping as many patients as we can and just so thankful to have the opportunity to. Um, to share with you about that.
Thanks. Does anybody have any questions? Alrighty. Did you? Oh, okay. Thank you so much. You do so much. Really, I mean, it's just, yeah. Kind of tapered off there, but. Your work is appreciated a lot.
Thank you. My, I think I did put on that additional page. I just kind of what we're anticipating for this coming year, so you can kind of see that breakdown. Um, and any funds that could be given would be helpful to just offset any of that cost, so. Um, you can kind of see our projected. Numbers for. The the number of care packages, surgery packages, all of those. Do you, do you have that in front of you or do you want me to read it?
Got it.
We have it, thanks.
Perfect, thanks.
Thank you.
Mary Council, you also have a third application to your packet through the CBA for reindeer. I don't know, is there anybody from the CBA on? Meeting tonight? I don't believe I just see that.
I don't see it.
So that third application is in your packet with the.
Oh, is it time for discussion? Any thoughts, comments, folks?
My thoughts are. Both homework found path and his courage or those, you know, very important organizations and work that they do and. You know, I am very supportive of supportive of us, you know, providing grants to both of these organizations. As far as the third one for the reindeer, I'm. Given the, you know, the very important crucial work that these two groups do. My sentiment is that our grant dollars, which are not many, go to them.
Split evenly.
Right, as opposed to like dividing it by three, which are the, you know, reindeer, so.
Anybody else have any comments or thoughts?
I was just going through the the city community grant program just to kind of see. It's typically, you know, we don't get a lot of applications for for these grants. And I'm very much appreciative of what with courage does and Homeward Bound as well in addition. I generally try to take the route of trying to give as much to everyone who took the time to show. The the thing, you know, and fill out the grant applications, because yeah, we don't, we typically don't have that much. So I don't know, not that I'm saying no to your idea, I just, the part of me wants to kind of. Help all the individual groups that reached out for the community grant application. Yeah, that's where I'm going through the. The grant, community grant program of what what it's for, you know, local nonprofit and for profit organizations. To enhance the quality of life through events within the city of Carlton. So I'm, it's open for discussion. I'm not saying.
So anybody else, any thoughts? Discussion? We have a motion on the floor.
If we don't split any of the two organizations. For the reindeer, what we do in vision, how the split would go.
I I don't have a preference. I see that their requested fund amount was fifteen hundred dollars. Um, not I, not necessarily advocating for all of that, but. You know, maybe there is something that they are trying to enhance Carlton through things that, projects that we support and are. Trying to garner support through with Christmas in Carlton, so. I'd open it up for discussion.
There, the total amount is. We had a little bit more interaction area, but my basic understanding is over here would be there for tree lighting. Amenity.
So just the one day and feel, but not up there the whole.
It's just a couple of hours, actually.
Yeah, I agree with that. I and I absolutely do, but at the same. On the same note, I'd like to see more involvement in the community grant program. So if. If if people don't feel like they're supported, even in a minor way, they might not apply again.
If we were dividing it into three, how would?
Did last year we split it between two people.
Yeah.
There was only one person, I believe, that applied.
I mean, I don't, it's just a suggestion, maybe we can award them five hundred dollars and we go twenty two fifty to each of the other organizations. I I don't, I just feel it like a gesture of goodwill and good intent.
Five hundred for the reindeer.
No, I do, I probably did the math. It would be twenty two fifty. And five hundred for. It's just a suggestion. If you guys think it's a bad idea, that's fine.
I actually think that's a good idea. I was, I was gonna say somewhere in the twenties. I. After seeing family members go through cancer, this, this is something that matters. And our our furry little friends.
They matter.
They matter, yeah. We we need to be good stewards and I think being good stewards means that we take care of health and life.
How are these reindeer being treated? I'm in terms of bringing them to a place.
I promise I won't be. No, they, it's a professional organization that they hook these reindeer out in advance, so. It is, these reindeer are treated very well.
So these are domesticated.
They're professional reindeer.
I wouldn't want amateurs.
Can I ask you a question, though? So what happens? So say the city did award five hundred dollars and the CBA is not able to get them, what, does that just go to the CBA as? A grant award? How does that work? Because it is quite a bit of money, it looks like, and if they struggle to get funding. Just kind of curious of what happens with those funds if it's just a donation, the grant is awarded and.
They have money down on the reindeer, so they have to commit at this point, so.
Do we have a motion?
Girl is looking at me, I can see it. You had a motion taken, so if you want to make.
Works before the motion, since we're still in discussion. Are are we all in agreement that? Council President Skipper here has has good funding ideas for the five hundred and twenty two fifty each?
I just think that, like, I view with courage with utmost respect in what they do, and same with Homeward Bound. I think that when you get these grant appi- applications in. It's our job to kind of decipher through that, like, some things are going to be more important and hit home for more people, and that's the case for me with. This organization, but on the same note, is what's going to happen if somebody applies for a sports program or something and. I don't like sports. I I like this over that, like, what is the whole goal of the program we're trying to run? And so we're not giving them their full ask, we're we're weighing that out. Um, based off importance.
Well, it's a first time ask, it's.
Well, and already pointed out, these are expensive reindeer, so their CBA is asking other people to donate, so they're going to get the money. I'm pretty sure.
But it's nice to know that they're they're. City government is supporting them too.
Yeah.
Beginning of a motion, counselor?
Yeah, I make a motion that we give CBA five hundred and we give. Homeward Bound.
Twenty two fifty.
Twenty two fifty and.
A second.
It's been moved and seconded.
Aye.
Aye.
The minutes were like that it was begrudgingly unanimous.
It wasn't begrudgingly, it was. Getting used to, we're getting used to new ideas. Alright. Okay, we are on to item D, engineering RFQ award recommendation.
Yes, thank you, Mary Council. In front of you is a recommendation to afford the engineering RFQ to protect. Um, as part of our federal funding requirements through the EPA for the two point two million that we've been awarded. We. Were informed that the EPA has a different standard for procurement procedure that is different from the state of Oregon. And so in order to be able to receive the reimbursement of our engineering expenses. They needed to meet the procurement standards of the EPA for current and future future federal. They needed to meet the procurement standards of the EPA for current and future, future federal funding. And so we have gone through the RFQ process, um, the, we received two proposals, they were evaluated. And now the recommendation is to award to tech. Is that the one name? I'm just looking for that. Yes, it is, it's on the.
What's tech, I think?
Yes. Decision made ultimately to choose, um, Tetra Tech based on all its costs. Based upon all the requirements in that chart, those proposals were valid.
Any other discussion or questions? Do we have a motion?
I move that the city council accept Tetra Tech as the contractor to provide city engineering services and authorize the mayor to execute all necessary documents.
I second that.
First, okay, is this?
Georgia.
All in favor? Opposed, motion carries. Okay, community room discussion and application review.
You get this stuff hearing for me for a while, and we could turn this up really. All right, let the circus begin, um, so this has been in front of you probably three, four, seventeen times, something like that, so, um. We're getting closer, you can see in this draft that we've actually added some. Numbers to it, some fees. So we're getting one, your input and review on that, um, the other thing that. It's kind of been a, a major change that I, that I would propose. Is as we've been working with this application, it, it kind of gets a little bit lengthy and a little bit longer, and every time we kind of update and modify it. Um, so my proposal is this, um, so. To make the best use of the room and the event app, I propose that we use the event app for events. So for those nonprofits and organizations that wanna use it for a meeting space, for example, if YCTC wants to have a meeting, they just. What we do is in their business application that they file every year, usually nonprofits, we don't charge them. The for-profits get charged fifty dollars, so my proposal is we charge them the fifty dollars, there's no more zero. Charge, but in that fifty dollar charge, it encapsulates the option for them to use the meeting room for whatever meetings they might have. Um, as long as the room is available. So it is a very discounted rate, and they don't have to go through the application every single time they wanna just have. So it kind of makes the best use of an existing form that we already have. Um, and now all we'd ask is for when they have a meeting, we have a supplemental format, we would do for the park shelter rental, just sign here, date time, da-da-da-da, pretty simple.
That's for any nonprofit.
For any nonprofit.
Or community. Or community. So this could be even a club, and I know that's a little bit of a different concept to get around of a business license for a book club, but that's. Right, what we've been brainstorming as a solution.
Yep, that way it is more accessible. And yet we still are recouping some fees for just covering. Exact time for setting up, uh, scheduling.
So then with that book club, they pay fifty dollars and then they can reserve the room. Once a month for the twelve months or twice a month, then.
I don't have a limit set, you guys could, are free to, you know, a- adjust and, and set those limits if you see fit. Um, we just would ask that. The room be available, it might not be like on a recurring basis, because we do have like meetings that come up, for example, a planning, an additional planning commission that meeting got set this far this much. Um, they would just have to call within twenty-four, forty-eight hours, and just whatever we decide works best for council and staffs. And then if the room's available, they can sure have their meeting. So it, it's, it's kind of how we run our park shelter rentals currently, if they call, it's available, it's theirs, you just gotta sign.
That's a fairly elegant.
I think I like it, is there some, just really briefly, is there something in there that like? Changes if it's after hours, like, so say that group wants, I know we talked about codes and things like that, like, is that still?
So on the, for the nonprofit or the?
Yeah, so you pay your fifty dollar fee and I wanna have a meeting. Twice a month on a Saturday, like, like, obviously, if staff time and things are needed, that's.
Right. On our current park shelter form, it does say time to and when. So we would have those parameters of start and finish time, so hopefully it wouldn't be a all day at the event.
And then say they wanted to do something on a Saturday or something, then they would just do the application form and.
And if they wanted to do parameters, like if they're all of a sudden asking staff, they're setting up tables and chairs, well, then that's more involved.
Yep.
And so then we would have to make it more of an event application than just the fifty dollar inclusive.
Yeah.
We would also have to look at, I know there was a concern about, um, someone monopolizing the room, is if the. XYZ club says repair fifty dollars and we're gonna re- reserve the room every single Friday for a year in advance for three to five. We're gonna have to grant them on by that.
I feel like.
Reserve the. And they, you know, like you say, a weekly, every Friday they show up.
I feel like it's a good, good, clean option, and I personally feel like this is a staff level thing that, you know, can handle. Those kind of situations, and if we need to change something, we can do it, you guys know best what's coming in, what's happening. I don't feel like I need to draw a hard line on any sort of thing that can be handled by staff.
It's a good starting place, we can, if it starts to get used or abused, we can also, you know, modify it and come back.
Come back.
It's much more efficient, it would take a lot of staff time, every time they had to fill out a complete application.
But there, we didn't let Amy take care of it.
We don't need any official.
No, um, is there any more input on any of the items that are in the rest of the pack? As far as rates per hour? Deposits? Fees?
I didn't mention about the police time, it's the same rate as just generic staff time. I assume that they are more expensive.
It's an average loaded rate, so we average police rate, we average. So it ended up being within a quarter of each other.
Yeah, and I think along the same note that I was saying earlier, is that if. You guys experience something and people are complaining about the rates, or people, you know, I mean, that feedback will come back to council and.
Oh, we'll hear about it.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, I'll be in the kids.
I didn't have any issue with it.
It is on page two thirty-five. Under deposits.
Okay.
So I do, I do have a question, the key deposit. That's the front door key?
It's a card access key.
Oh, okay.
That provides, depending on how it's programmed, what doors it will open.
Understood, so you, you lose your magic card, your, your magic access card. That's to cover the cost of the magic a- access card.
And that is cost, that is cost to the city.
Okay.
That is at cost, that is not any, not a penny more, not a penny less as what we are being quoted right now.
Awesome, because I was gonna say rekeying locks would generate something way beyond that, so. Thank you for the clarification.
Your system allows us if. Each card has a number associated with it, and so if you were to check it out. And you don't, you disappear, we don't ever hear from you again and don't see the card again, we can go into our computer and uncheck the box, you no longer have access. It also has the ability to expire. So if you're, if you've reserved rooms from three to five, we can set it to expire at five fifty. And you will no longer have access to the bill.
So then are you trapped in it?
You can always get out. It's about getting in.
Is the, is the entire, um, lock system gonna be keys that are cards then, or?
Yes, there are too many times.
No, I, I don't have a problem with that, I was just wondering.
May sound silly and a little nitpicky, but it may make it a little more clear if you have a key. Deposit.
Oh, oh, instead of just key?
Yeah.
Yeah, actually, um. Cause folks are, there's a lot of folks that still think about keys, like real keys.
Like or access card, whatever. Or the proper term.
It's, but yeah, just put a little in, yeah, engraving on there, yeah.
Alrighty, um. That takes, that recreational immunity update.
Last month, we, the city of Carlton, you know, yes, the city council decided to opt-in, moving liability. Protections contained in RS one oh five point six six eight, this in response to the Newport City Port Legion where. Recreational immunity for certain activities was somewhat reduced. The League of Oregon Cities pushed really hard to get some fix in place during the short session. This wrapped up. At the end of February, um, and they are intending to do a more comprehensive fix to the actual recreational immunities. During the twenty twenty-five legislative session, um, but during the twenty. For short session, um, they did push, um. Legislation was adopted that increased, expanded the liability protection contained in RS one five point six six eight. That's. Liability limitation. Is not limited to recreational uses, which is kind of considered a big plus because. The Newport case hinges on the definition of recreational immunity or recreational identity, and what is or is not. So RS one five six six eight covers any activities on certain approved. Or approved in the city, and the League of Oregon Cities successfully lobbied to include these specific. Uh, activities that are utilized as examples in that statute, um, to include walking or hiking as upper activities. So at this point, I feel that the city is as protected. In terms of recreational liability concerns that we can reach to the city. At this time. In addition to, and I can't remember if you might try to, last council meeting, but, um, we worked with the SCIS, first in, first in, consultant. And got signs for all our recreational spaces.
Pathway in there.
Pathway in there. Um, so I, I don't believe that the legislative fix in twenty twenty-five will require any action, I anticipate that we'll just use that for issues that. Well. While also not disclosing all of our parts.
That's, so the second meeting, it's not.
We passed it, uh, on an emergency basis.
Oh. That's right. Okay.
So I, I do have. Do have a question, are you satisfied with the results that we got from Capitol on?
No.
No? What would you like to see more from?
I think they should have put a fix to the actual recreational immunity statute, instead of going through the. Um, trails, right of ways, and Eastman's route, um, but I think. There was so much that they were trying to do. It was, I, I trust, really, really trust the League of Oregon Cities and their lobbying team, so I. I know they aren't listening now, maybe later they will be, um, I am in no way criticizing them, I just do not feel that it is, their work is not done. They acknowledge that, and I endorse their acknowledgement of that.
And you see that they will be doing more.
Yes, they, uh, in their legislative updates, they have said they have a plan for the twenty twenty-five legislative session for a more comprehensive fix.
Be looking forward to this.
I think just about every city in. Right here in this attorneys.
Yeah.
Oh, actually, I did have one more thing that is half embarrassing and half funny, well, I, those are the same half. But I, other, many other city attorneys were looking for ordinance language to, and opt-in to the trail, um, and the Eastman Limited Liability. And I thought that I was just providing Carlton's ordinance with the Medford City Attorney, and I actually sent it to the whole Oregon, uh, city attorney lister. So we have received a lot of thank yous for sharing that.
Well, that was nice of you. They found it useful.
I, I have heard that they are finding it useful.
That's good. Something nice. Moving on to item G, general ledger request.
Mayor Council. The, I received a request from Council Grandale, um, to receive the general ledger and on a monthly basis. And I. In my experience, I had not seen this before, and so I did read out. Uh, to my colleagues and asked about their experience. Um, in, in the request section is this. And they confirmed that this is not a, a traditional request that is provided to council or to public. Um, these general ledgers are hundreds of pages, um, they often require confidential information that would require redaction. Uh, they're basically the foundational financial document, and with all the transactions going to utility payments and all. Credit card, whatever, all of it goes into that, the general ledger. Due to its use in financial management, um, many of the entities noted that there's often no meaningful context. Um, to the amount of the detail contained in the document. Uh, and they would further note that they would recommend direction be to the budget document, which is prior years or. Materials, and they talk about any budget document lagged a little bit due to. But that, that's where the materials are. Or that's where the information is. And that our monthly financial statements provide a comparison to current budget to monthly revenues and expenses that were built upon that general regular base, base data. And I did go to specifically to other cities, and I provided you with the city of Lafayette. They provide a panel statement on a monthly basis, and I've included an example there. The city of Dane provides its budget versus actual statements on a quarterly basis, an example that passed, they provide a check report, um, monthly. City of McMinville, the passionate investment report only, um, there's usually a two-month lag time. And so I provide, and they also provide their annual comprehensive report or their audit. And so I provide, and they also provide their annual comprehensive report or their audit. And so I included those samples. I've included samples from McMinville Water and Line, their statement that's provided. City of Salem, financial summaries I provided quarterly in the budget to the Budget Committee, not council. And I also included some information on that. City of Eugene, I also summarized what their progress was with financial statements not being provided. And then at the bottom is a summary of what City of Carlton provides monthly as well as financial portal, you know, online access. And so this is not typically the document that's to council level or even a public level. Because of its nature, this summary and research with the other communities confirms that experience of mine. And so I'm open to council questions. Christie is here on the line to talk about our processes. But we need direction from council about how you want to proceed with this. Would be, would require significant re-priorization, staff time, as well as a cost. Because it is estimated that at last count, this was just under 700 pages. It grows every single day because it does begin all financial transactions from the city. It is estimated to require six to 10 hours to read that. Currently, we do not have staff resources to do so, and it would require hiring a consultant to a hundred to a hundred and twenty dollars in order to do so.
There any discussion questions?
I for one, counselor, do not need to see this level of detail. Feel that the level of detail we get is more than I can manage to.
And I'm guessing why we look? See what we get once a month to look through it. I mean, I'll be honest with you, most of it's over my head anyway. So I have a question.
So what is the information that needs to be redacted?
It contains all the information. So it's going to, it's going to contain people who have paid their utility bills. It's going to contain personally protected information, PPIs, which then would may be redacted in order to meet our security policy to protect confidentiality by state statute.
Because that shows, yeah, that's going to show the individual's name. It's going to show their account numbers, I'm assuming. I mean, their own personal checking account numbers. Yeah.
Being goes down much in detail, the transaction, like it has, it goes down much in detail, the transaction.
When audits happen, is that ledger audited too?
I can answer that, David. Our audit is done once a year. It's done by an independent auditor. They come in and spend the whole week. They take that whole detail and they match to all our payables, all our cash receipts, to our bank accounts. Anything that's in the city, we have to, we bring in a whole bunch of boxes and they reside in there. And then it goes back to the accountant's office. It goes at a higher level of audit to making sure we're meeting GASP, PERS and all the new rules that come through. One of the examples that was provided that I think Counselor Brandao wanted was the actual annual audited. That was with the City of Eugene. And we do do that. It is on our website. We do something unusual. We do have an online transparency portal where it shows all our activity through the for revenues and expenses. Although because I was trying to create a report for Counselor Brandao, I kind of broke it on March 18th. So they're doing a fix right now. But we do pass audit with flying colors. We pass our payroll audits with flying colors and we also bring in an independent bank reconciler that comes in once a month and matches all our deposits and all our expenses and rectifies our financial records. So we're very transparent and I guess I'm just not sure, Counselor Brandao, maybe I'm missing what you're looking for that I could try to provide or create us a report that was not an audit report, but a simpler report of what's missing maybe.
I just wanted to see the details of the transactions. Well, not that all the accounts of the, the financials, I wanted to see what some of the accounts and what we, what the information that we have. For instance, one of the accounts that as counselors, we don't have visibility of is the credit card. We don't see what happens with the credit card because we see, we see the AP and the checks and all the bills are getting paid. We see the budget, we see the revenue. That doesn't, that doesn't include what happens in the credit card. So if I want to see something there, there is no visibility. And I guess I could use that report. I did use it for some of it, but there is very limited information. So when I look at one report, there's very limited information that I, and then I hear the general ledger has super detailed information. So it's it's confusing. Like if, when I see it looks very general, like when I look at this report, it's like, I don't even have the vendor name on, on that report. But then I'm hearing that I have super detailed information. So I'm hearing conflicting information. And at this point, I, I, in my opinion, the general ledger should be a very easy report to get. And if, if it's something like a description, whatever, I don't, I don't need to see it. But if it's that much of a problem that you're going to have to hire someone to do that, it doesn't make any sense to get it. So I, I, you know, we don't need it. I'll, I'll just, I can look with the information I have there. I can make a public request myself to look at certain things if I want, but I don't think the old route of receiving a monthly report that's going to cost apparently thousands of dollars to redact things. So I, I don't want that. It's not, it doesn't make any sense.
So I can tell you the city, besides the credit card, has a Willco account. We have Napa Davidson Auto account. We have the Carlton Corners where the guys get gas. All the receipts are matched, but also the auditors, the first thing they do is go through those accounts and statements to make sure we code it appropriately. But you can always, as I'm going to advise you today, because I've given you your budget. You've got it a week early, but I did find I'm going to need to replace one sheet. You'll get that tomorrow. I, I encourage you to always reach out and ask questions. I love talking about it. I love creating reports and I was trying to come up with something. I did not create in the transparency portal though, an accounts payable report because you do get that accounts payable report in every month. So if council has a consensus, if they want to see something different, I can always look at that. But I'm still quite not sure what's missing.
Yeah, I think at this level, I don't think we need it. I, I, I can find my own information from the website than I something I want is at least with, with the budget, I want the information in a more easy to read way where like I don't want to see things in paper. Like I can't compare things not looking at paper. To be able to see those things in Excel or something that, that makes more sense. So you can sort or and research or look things. It doesn't make sense to get a bunch of numbers in paper. I can't do anything. We live in digital age at this point. Having, having the budget in paper makes no sense. So.
Um, for example, on budget, it's a permanent record. If it was sent in an Excel format and not a PDF, it's manipulated and could be the data changed and published without the city's consent. That's why when we create these documents in a packet, it comes in a PDF.
Yeah, but it would be different copies. You wouldn't, like you would have the original. We wouldn't change the original. I, yeah, I, I don't know what to say. We're going to be looking at papers and guys have to manually enter on the paper and to make such spreadsheet so I can compare things. And that's probably what I'm going to have to do.
Then for you in particular, and as I'm still not quite sure, either if you need a comparison or something or have a specific question, I can always look and try to find that information for you.
Yeah, thank you. I, I hear it. I mean. Yes.
Okay. All right. We done?
Yeah, I got nothing.
Right. Moving on to item H, lower dog park leash requirement.
See the request from Council Brandao about modifying city code regarding police requirements with a follow-up about that. In front of you is a summary on page two of staff's five years. And then it follows with a group department timeline of dog calls. January 2019, the March 21st, October 24th, with a legend associated with assisted, no violation, referred code enforcement warrant cited with definitely from there on out. Those are every call. You will see that the total number of calls on this summary, and it's a little over 200 calls with an average of about 40 per year. Number of park calls are also called outside of year since that was reviewed. And you can see that summarize and end of each year that there are various the number of calls to the parks specifically are very low.
Actually, this is great information because we do get, I mean periodically, as you're talking to folks, you get that, those questions. So nice to.
I think people not, not complaining, at least calling the police, it's not indicative that there is any issues there. I, I have issues there. I, I talk with people that had issues there. I if you go to the park, you, you're going to have the dogs come at you and especially the times that they're walking there. And regardless of my opinion about the matter, I think if we I think my point is if we want to have a dog park, I think we should have a, like a legal dog park where we have signs. We we follow like a dog park design, which is what I included here in the research for a dog park. So I think we, we shouldn't be in this position where it's like this unofficial dog park that people can come and let their dog run around and do whatever. I think we, we shouldn't be in this murky waters. We should be there. We are dog park or we are not a dog park or do we have fences or like, like if you look at the research, you shouldn't have a dog park. Whereas there's a river and we got the Yamhill River that goes to the park, the lower park, because that could create various issues with bacteria and dog poop and everything. And we got like playgrounds on, on the park as well. And like at the same time, you don't want to have kids running around there when you have dogs running around the same time. And it's all delicious. So I, I think we should, like either way, I, it doesn't really matter, but I think we need to follow some sort of design with, with, if, if it's going to be a dog park and the, the lower park. So that's my point.
Input staff is looking for tonight if the time is that a council does want to discuss this at a future meeting. Is they provide directions staff about how soon you want to talk about this that's planned on our current agendas? And what information we would be looking for for staff to provide on this issue?
Hey, I agree with him that the lower park should be a dog on leash and a dog dedicated area. I know I brought this up in there multiple times.
The mayor has commented on it.
The mayor has commented to me most times. But I personally agree that dogs should be on the leash and have a dedicated area for them. And if I'm down in the park sitting there hanging out, I don't appreciate somebody having a dog run at me and they all say, oh, don't worry, he won't bite. I've heard that too this time. Or jump or anything. That's my take.
I'm sorry. Thank you for that. I forgot to also add that since this afternoon, we received a request for a search and rescue training group. They were hoping to use such a lower park exercise that they understand most cities prefer to have dogs on leash, but they would need to be off leash, be fully under control. So this request just came in that this lower park, just to add to the complexity of discussion.
And I've seen the bloodhound, like bringing the puppy's blood into that lower park and do the training for certain. Those dogs can't be on clean. I've also seen a lot of time in that park where no one is at that park.
That lower.
The lower park. I was there an hour after the Easter egg event Saturday.
Well, I think that, I mean, if there's apparently enough concern to, or another discussion on it, I don't think we're going to come to any resolution tonight. But I think like what Shannon was saying is what are we, what are we looking to facilitate that discussion? You know?
Yeah.
Leash laws, what that looks like, what the current code says with what's hap, you know, I mean. The costs, I mean, I don't know how easy that is. Like I know that the creating a special dog park comes at a cost as well, you know? Stuff like that. So.
But also the research paper has the information for us. I guess people have researched that already. I don't think we need to hire someone. I think we should like you can get different sources and discuss it for more of a Yeah, I think there's a lot of, there is a lot of research that has been done about that. Yeah, I think there's a lot of, there is a lot of research that has been done about that. And the the problem with us just having this park, that's uh it's. They they are essentially allowed this, all the conflicts that that happen in the park and. Like if we. Like if we wanna incur those costs, yeah. Um, yeah, we they would have to be in a separate area. Maybe we have to consider to have like a big dog area and a big small dog area like. I just don't think we should keep going with this, like whatever we have now, which is unofficial dog park.
So with what's been talked about so far about wanting to know leash laws, current code, cost, maintenance, possibly hearing from somebody who's. Or a city who has a dog. An expert. With everything else staff has got on the plate. I don't reasonably see unless you re-prioritize us being able to conduct this research till August and schedule somebody to be a meeting until August or September.
I can say based on this data, we don't have that big of an urgent concern. So I think that would be an okay day.
That's after the summer now.
Okay.
The summer is when everyone goes to work.
Now, why can't one?
And we have a few other things going on.
Considerations about whether it's a wise thing to do versus not.
Think we need to focus on what our priorities really are. And I think infrastructure over parks is. You know, I hate to say it, the whole parks. Our infrastructure really, really needs our attention.
I mean, in the short term. How does every, it hasn't really been talked about, but the co- current code does state that in the upper park, dog must dogs must be on a leash. Um I know this is a controversial topic, but what is is there opposition to enforcing that at the lower park as well? And does that? Dissolve the conversation about a dog park? If every dog is on, supposed to be on leash. I know people have their dogs and they like to do that. And so I'm not, I'm just opening it up if.
Does it get enforced?
Right, no. How does it get enforced in the upper park? I mean, it's just like anything. It's probably complaint driven, you know? So.
Yeah, that's, uh if if we're gonna talk about dog park, I think we should enforce a lease a leash law down in the lower park. And then we can change it if that's the case, but like we don't have a dog park currently. We just have a.
Who's gonna do the enforcement? Do we have the police department do the enforcement? Does the public work? Yeah, do the enforcement? I'm I'm just kind of throwing it out as a question of it's. We think about these things and I. Needless to say, as you well know, I've. I've. I'm not excited about doing an uh dog park, but. Um, one of the, one of the things that I've thought about before, as we've talked about this, is who who ends up getting stuck doing the enforcement? Our guys don't have the time to do it.
How do, how don't they have time? I I. I always hear no one has time, but we have time to do things like the police, they can go on calls. Like, it's not like.
They can respond to calls, but you say that nobody calls the police.
Yeah.
Were dog issues at the park.
I guess they would if there were signs in the park and says, oh. I I I just don't buy on, we don't have time, we don't. I don't know, we we make time.
I I I personally think, again, I don't think this is, I think this is. Controversial or whatever you wanna call it enough that I don't think we're gonna come to a resolution tonight. I I also agree with Council Brandejo. And also understanding staff time, August, and I mean, maybe we could take it in chunks, make it be, we can. I don't, it's a bad idea maybe, but it's just. Maybe we talk about leash laws, you know what I mean, sooner than that and just focus on what that looks like, the enforcement and. I don't. I'm trying, I know there's gonna be equal sides of both of it. All right, I don't.
The code is ambiguous as far as a leash law down in the lower park. It says no dogs are allowed on sports field and place for areas, never park, in upper park, dogs must be on a leash. And then it says any person feeling a clean up after a dog is subject to a fine.
Is that find the maximum fine allowed? What we're gonna stamp out or?
Have the research unfortunately. I can add that to what research council would want is a different day.
Yeah, I I saw a number of five hundred and that just. You wanna discourage people from their dogs, leaving their dog uh landmine behind, you may wanna raise that.
Be honest that as far as dogs, I'm just, it's just personally, I've never been concerned about dogs down here being off leash. I mean, I'm. You know, comfortable with, you know, the owners. Uh keeping them under control and that they're, you know, they're not in their own territory. What I am fearful, and I just actually have this happen, we do all of my name names. But certain residents on my street had. Two dogs that um morally are, you know, restrained. For some reason, they were loose when I was starting to walk by the house. The owner was sitting there on the porch and I retreated. Because I couldn't engage the owner, you know, say, you. You have control of those dogs because those dogs, it it because when a dog is at their own premise, they're very territorial. You could be literally across the street from them and they'll they the dog could consider that part of their territory come after you and if. One or both of those dogs that come after me, I could be dead. You know, they're, you know, they're big, powerful dogs. That scares me. The dogs down here don't.
But that could happen, the lower park too. Yeah, I guess the not the.
What is?
Well, I know people who don't even go down there anymore because of issues. They just don't go, they don't take your dog down, they just don't go down.
Yeah, me too. I'm multiple people don't don't go to the lower park as well. I don't take my dog there because of that too, like. I think there is a lot of people that have that issue. I think it's it's being overdue to being fixed and. It's probably one of the first things I brought in when I became a counselor and. I was told to wait and I have been waiting. It's been three years and a half. I'd like to address that before the summer starts. Already starting.
So before this summer starts, if we did this on your next meeting, we have the development, it's going to be much longer than. And you have all. Assuming that the budget committee makes a recommendation, you're gonna have all of your budget adoption. Uh documents and you're gonna have a potential recology rate review to go through.
Next month.
Next month.
I just don't, I don't, I don't see that we're gonna get it up to a resolution next month. And I also see that. Again, I'm squarely in the middle of it. Um I don't lean one way or the other, but I know. Hearing from things tonight, there is clear division and I'm sure that division exists in the community. So I'm not in a position to rush to a decision without information or community input. To appease one side or the other. That's my personal, I don't feel comfortable with that.
So are we.
Now, with that being said, if there was some way we could get more. Community input, community saying. Talk to some other people. On that, discuss maybe the leash law part first, that you say, you know, it's complaint driven. Well, a lot of the code in this town is complaint driven. So the codes aren't enforced because. There's no complaints driving to be enforced. But there's things that are happening. Yeah.
Believe it to engage the community takes a part of the staff to be able to do that. You can't just.
Let's hand out flyers at the dump day. I'm kidding, we'll have great, we'll have grant.
I'm not gonna be here.
But no, really, we could put a QR code to the survey at on a flyer, don't. Yeah.
Yeah.
That could.
Would be relatively.
Easy. It's a great idea.
Take the hour max, even with three.
Okay.
Simple survey and do you support?
Just to.
One of the.
Yeah.
Have you had problems at lower park with?
I think I think that would be a great question that.
You can be here for don't they?
Do you have problems with? Interaction of dogs at the lower park and and what was the negative interaction?
Can you do a narrative on that QR code survey of what was the negative interaction or is it really a yes, no?
Um, you can do some, it it might limit you on characters for Google Docs or what.
I yeah, I'll leave the words. Can you, is it easier to do a QR code on the website or?
I could have got anything.
I just, I just wondered if. Doesn't, I chose dump date because everybody's down here.
That'd be a great idea for a paper copy, but it's something that we could use and put it on our Instagram page, on our website. Um it would, it'd be easily to be manipulated into different types of formats.
I kind of feel like this is kinda like the. Seventh street, you know, everybody's using it as a race. We put out. Speed signs and all sorts of things. Also did a survey. I I do think that need more input from the public. Granted, I hear what you're saying. I'm Brando, I hear what you're saying. I think in order to get some better visibility into this, we need to see where where the public.
Something we could do data gathering for me and Jim.
They want a bigger window of time to make sure we gather.
That would work because May and June are busy with other stuff anyway, so you're gonna be busy with a few other things. So that would give you a chance to. Just gather the data and not have to deal with other than that.
I think we should associate some type of costume because if we agree. That we should have a dog park, it's gonna take money to to have a place like I, like I said, we. We need to follow some type of design to have an actual dog park in the lower park, not just. Whatever, let your dog run around, go to the river, poop poop there, like there's disease, there are things associated with. Like it shouldn't just be. No or yes, like if there's a yes, there's there's a cost and there's a cost associated with. Whatever property taxes or or whatever the funds gonna come from streets or. Come from the parks funds, but there is, there's gonna be a cost associated with that. We shouldn't just ignore it.
So include include there, would you be willing to pay? As a dog owner?
Yes.
As far as a dog park too. The little house dog park, I'd be curious with their experience and knowledge of their dog park and the issues that they've had. I mean, I'm.
I can reach out to somebody, Shannon, if you don't, if you want me to at the city to. See if anybody would be willing to offer.
Yeah, I'd like to hear what the city has to say.
I know Forest Grove has got a huge one. Wilsonville got, they just put in a huge one there. With one in Forest Grove, it's pretty good size.
Yeah, that's the problem. They're pretty good sized.
Okay, I was telling the mayor that I think there was an agenda item I, is that correct?
That's correct.
And I, I believe you, but I can't find it.
Because it was my addition of update.
Uh, that's right. Thank you. Yes. Are we done? We're done. Move on.
Alright, you are going to see actual pictures of the. Break of of the force main. And some of the associated materials that came out of the force main. But it ended up being with a seam that separated most. Oops, and so we weren't able to. There. Being. Uh at this point in time. I will be taking with me. And I'm talking to our federal delegations.
When are you leaving?
I'm leaving next Tuesday at six AM.
So, quick question, um is that, sorry to tell from your picture, but is that cast?
Yeah.
That is the nineteen fifty's. Same pipe that had the rupture earlier.
Right, so in a different location on a different side of the street. So my question was. And maybe this predates you. Like that area was recently developed, new sidewalks. I don't know how much half road improvements had to happen. None of that or a portion like, it seemed very close to Han Creek and like I know we did some. Some repair, not repair, some replacement, like. It was really close to Han, the pump station. So I I was super really, I was kinda like, wow, I kinda would imagine that that. The other break was a little bit further up on East Main. It it surprised me that that was still cast that close to Han. With all the development that happened there. I mean. It just didn't get addressed at that time.
No, not the, not this section of pipe.
So is it, is it, I mean, I'm putting you on the spot, so I apologize, but is the. The section of pipe from the pump station all the way up East Main, is that all casters? Do we have a section of any good pipe in that?
Cast iron. Um, there is a section that was replaced as part of the home creep pump station, but the majority of.
Must have been a really small section.
Majority of it is still. Yeah, the section that was replaced. Maybe misremembering, but was about.
Just coincidental, but these two instances have happened in a short span of time, or is there some similarities that are caused?
The similarities are that it's still the nineteen fifty's pipe. It is still corroded and it is still receiving corrosion. Um, and in its family. And as Warren mentioned, after the last rupture, we are likely to continue to see more.
But I.
I'm so much pressing.
Right.
Because of the developments.
There. There's nothing to completely link that's stressed of developments. Is it possible?
Yeah.
Yes, but it is more likely.
How many decades is the, is this product overused?
That I don't have a current answer for, but I can't get that.
Okay, it would be interesting to ask Gordon too, like, cause I kinda what Counselor Wardmore is saying. The timing, maybe it's just timing, that's how the world works sometimes, but. This big improvements at Han Creek and have two. Force main breaks in such a close proximity to this project and this new development seems kind of peculiar. I understand completely, the age of the pipe is the main factor, but. It seems like. Ever since that pump station and everything went online, we've had two large breaks or not large, but significant.
It must contribute in some way, like you're putting more volume, like more water going, like even if it's not all the way. Just going through there to the to the development, like it. It's, it makes sense that there's more stress and there's will be more breakage. Right, like that. Well, I feel like less stress, less breakage. Well, I feel like less stress, less breakage, right?
In that way.
Um, so. Yeah, I don't know.
There was anything you could do about it, but.
Yeah. Is that part of the studies we do when we, when we say, yes, development, come here and develop more, are we looking? At things like that? And what are the mitigations that we? Like, what do we do to, to sort of recoup the cost of having more people and more breakages? So, like, like. What, what do we do to, well, to sort of. My French, you think of a word, but. Yeah.
We collect system development charges from the developers for every lock. And those system development charges are sort of the highest. And those were prepaid for our developments, they could get home creek pump station. And in any of our infrastructure priorities, we always work with the public works director in our city. Here to identify what they believe about that period of time is the most critical issue for capacity and for failure. And sometimes, uh. A pipe decides that it's decided to reprioritize itself.
Has the PSI gone up with the new pump station compared to the old one?
I would have to get Gordon to answer that. But basically, when we did the pump station, they went through the analysis, they went through the engineering. And there was nothing to say at that point in time, that this pipe could not handle. If there's an increase in PSI. Could not handle extra capacity, could not, there was nothing.
You can, I mean, you can do all the, you, you know, you do the theory and you do the studies and you do the research and you know that. With the information that we have on how these things work, that they're gonna be okay. That's what you can always think, but. You know, mother nature has a way of interfering. And. There are things that happen that you, you just don't expect to see happening. I mean, I've seen that before with. Not sewer lines around here, but other places or, and other kinds of lines that. If you're changing the way. The product is working. You're upsetting, you're just creating a whole chain of events. And that's what happens. It's nobody's fault. You know, the scientists can sit there and, and figure things out and theoretically, this is what's gonna happen. But theory isn't always the answer.
I will just say, even though there was quite a bit of diversion, I was impressed with staff and Lawson and how quickly. Quickly it got taken care of. I mean, I was happy with it. I mean. It was, I'm sure a long time, there was more time kind of analyzing and waiting.
Yeah.
For, I'm sure Lawson to dispatch and get out there, but as quickly as they were out there, gosh, they were.
They got it done.
They had a long green sign out that, that overflow was happening, did we, did we float or something?
The last break did it, did it fall into the.
Yeah.
Uh, this break appears very much to be erosion. What was the cause of the last break for that? Okay, so these pipes are just done.
Fixing them piece manly and to do the whole thing.
That's where Grant Chase.
What is plan B if you don't get a grant?
How are you with a shovel? We can have, we can have, um, yeah, city council shovel days.
It might be more than just a shovel. There might be some pipe work involved. Um, plan B, actually, it would be plan A, actually. Is to go with our utility rate methodology and how that this is how we are building up. Hey, for decades of deferred.
Plan A is we all hide because people in town are gonna be very upset.
We couldn't get a loan or a bond or something to pass to do those things. I feel like at this point, that'll probably be better than the utility rate increase.
That's something that council can consider. It would depend on how the citizenry views utility rates versus a property tax increase. Um, so that's obviously for open discussion. Uh, as far as a loan, there are loan opportunities and I. Now that we received five hundred thousand dollars confirmed from Congresswoman Salinas's work. I was wanting to take a three point two million and a half a million. Um, and talk to the DQ because they have a form of forgiveness program and see if we could marry the two in which we don't have. Principle to break pay necessarily, we're using other, leveraging other funds. Unfortunately, I was researching other topics, I was unable to do that this week.
Yeah, I think utility rating should be the last option, in my opinion. People have more than enough utility rate increase just as a normal occurrence.
The city does have statutory obligations to cover operating costs, so a certain amount of utility rate increases are not. Really optional. We can't underfund our water, wastewater systems.
But that's that, what are the, three or four percent that just kinda happens every year?
Doesn't it go along the lines of, of cola?
Right, so the issue that cola is at three point two, as you will see in your binders that you're gonna take home and breathe.
So we have seventy-five year old steel pipe.
No, it's not, it's clay pipe.
Clay pipe.
No, no.
Clay pipe's a hundred years old.
How old are those?
Do we still have any? We don't have any, we don't still have any wooden, do we?
It's been twenty and thirty million dollars. Because we've not been able to make any incremental improvement. I need pads. And just for fun, to end it on a nice note, I don't have it, I actually have a comb to be packaged up. But I have put in a poxy piece of our water pipe, our water. So kind of the ground, so I am shipping that to DC tomorrow and are. They're going to try to get into the Capitol building and see if we can pass security.
That makes it sound like it's illegal.
It's metal.
It's metal and it's a pipe.
But it's in a cast resin thingy.
It's in epoxy. It's about this big.
It sounds like a little trophy.
It is.
Is that your trophy?
Well, yes, it is my, our trophy.
Okay, our.
Our trophy, uh, I had intended to leave one with each federal representative, but my art project. Had some starts and stops, so I have one that we're gonna see if we can get through. Use it as an example.
Put on display in the city hall, the new city hall. Like a centerpiece.
We'll, we'll have lots. Have you not seen all the pipes? I've had them saved for me.
And it's a, it's a collection.
I keep asking to pursue a pipe, but understandably, they will not let me get near that.
I have a nice little piece of clay.
Make a motion.
You bet.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Yes, if you do have any.